To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda?
No, Mr. Mayor.
Motion to approve the agenda?
Second.
Motion by Josh, second by Kate, in favor. Hi. Agenda is adopted. There's no presentations, proclamations, or acknowledgements tonight, so we'll jump into public comment. Anyone here to speak into public comment about anything not on the agenda? Hey, Commissioner Ward, how are you?
Doing good, how are you?
Good.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, everybody, Tom Mostak, County Commissioner, just a couple things. We're in a thick of road construction and all right down the road 27 is, it doesn't look like it's going to get done, but...
Ever.
This year. It's actually looking better. I was complaining about nothing was happening, but they were doing all the work on the other plans, so when it comes, it's still starting to look better. We're doing our budgeting, our letting, just like you guys are, and we're looking at a 7 point, I keep saying 2, but we're looking at 7.4, so if we get some more state dollars, it wouldn't be so bad. I think we could drag it down into the high 3s or 4s, but...
Time will tell with that. We're looking at doing a moratorium on THC, like the marijuana gummy bears and all that stuff here, not this Tuesday, but I think it's the 6th, the first meeting in September, so if anyone has any ideas, you know, if they're strongly in favor or against it, give me a call, let me know, but for right now, it looks like it'll probably go for a year that we'll have a moratorium, so...
And generally, the reason for the moratorium is just a lack of clarity, kind of lot of holes in the legislation?
Yep, yep, well, just the state, you know, just gave all the local jurors, you know, and we're, so we're the planning and zoning for the townships, the township, so the cities can do what they want. Credit River, in fact, has already put their moratorium on. We don't know what the costs are going to be, I think Brady could probably tell us better, but the costs are awful, are higher than the money we're going to bring in. Am I wrong by that?
In my opinion, no.
No? Okay, there, good. So, yeah, that's what we have, and so anyhow, any questions for me otherwise? Thank you.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else here to speak into public comment about anything not on the agenda? That will go ahead and close public comment. Anyone have anything on consent agenda they'd like removed, or a quick question on?
Motion to approve consent agenda?
Motion by Kate, second by Bryce, in favor. Consent passes. There's no public hearing, so we'll jump into general business. How's it going, Renee?
Good.
Good.
So, Lot Lot A on the agenda is a request for a conference of plan, and rezoning. I'll start the presentation here and check it right up. Sorry. I've been clear. Okay, the application before us again is a request to amend the city's comprehensive plan and rezone Outlot A Old Town. The background on this property, we have the developers or applicants present tonight. They have an option to purchase this four-acre property and are interested in constructing a multifamily housing project in Appleton Market. Formal applications have been received. Legal description is Outlot A Old Town, and the lot is 4.157 acres at the corner of, right across the corner of Old Town Road and Dakota Avenue.
Our current 2040 comprehensive plan guides this property to commercial, and the application is to re-guide it to high-density residential. Generally, a commercial land use guidance would allow for a wide range of commerce, recreation, entertainment-type uses. Typical uses would include various types of retail, service, office, entertainment, restaurants, motor fuel facilities, and other accessory uses that are incidental to principal uses. High-density residential zoning, our guidance would generally provide for housing opportunities in multiple-family structures, apartments, townhouses, condominiums. Densities in this land use designation range from 10 to 30 units per net acre. Typical uses are multiple-family dwelling structures, which contain more than eight dwelling units. The current zoning on the property is PUD. In 2006, a 32-unit townhome development had been approved but never constructed following the recession, and the current application is to rezone the property from PUD to R4. Looking at the surrounding neighborhood conditions, starting to the north, the area to the north is entirely guided by our comprehensive plan to high-density residential. The zoning is a combination of PUD and R4, and the existing land use is their townhome development and some vacant land. To the east is, our comprehensive plan guides the property to the east to low-density residential and commercial, existing zoning, R1 and B1, and we have single-family detached housing and vacant land to the east. To the south, we have commercial, our land use plan guides the property to the south all to commercial. The existing zoning to the south is B1 and PUD, and existing uses are a multi-tenant retail center and a restaurant. And to the west, the property is located outside of the city limits. It's guided by the city's comp plan to commercial, a combination of commercial and high-density residential. It is owned by Scott County currently, it's urban reserve, and there are single-family detached homes on larger lots located to the west. Lot size, again, is 4.157 acres currently. If the property, the property would need to be platted prior to development on the parcel into a lot and block, the city would seek additional right-of-way along Dakota Avenue. As it is a major collector street, we would look for a little additional right-of-way of approximately .1 acres. The lot does meet the minimum lot size for both commercial or high-density residential. If regighted and applying the density range of 10 to 30 units per net acre, we could see a range of 41 to 122 maximum housing units on the property, while still meeting, needing to meet other zoning ordinance criteria. So, the current applicant has submitted some development concepts. I would just like to point out that these are concepts, if the property is regighted and rezoned, our standards would apply, so anything really could be built that meets our minimum standards. These were just concepts, and we haven't had a lot of discussion on what might actually be constructed since the application. Reviewing some access and road transportation issues, again, Dakota Avenue adjacent to the property on the east side is a major collector street. The purpose of major collectors is to link neighborhoods to business concentrations or arterial roadways. They generally serve trips within the community, and individual property access should be avoided. We don't allow private access onto collector roads by our codes. Old Town Road is a local roadway, and the purpose of the local roadway is to provide access to the adjacent land uses. They connect the specific property to the arterial or collector system, and they provide direct access. There are two existing curb cuts into the property that were planned with the original townhouse development that I had referenced. Future access to the parcel will need to be from Old Town Road. No access would be permitted to Dakota. We would write that into the plat approvals. We did want to do an analysis of the traffic volume projections from commercial development versus high-density residential development, so city staff consulted with traffic engineer from Bolton and Mink to assist in the evaluation. The results of that analysis were included in your packet, and the analysis, the traffic engineer identified a number of different types of commercial uses that could be constructed based on our zoning. Selected were a strip retail center, shopping plaza, supermarket, or office uses, so based on the size of parcel, there are standard equations that the traffic engineers use to determine what size building or how many square feet of building would typically go on that parcel, and then calculate traffic projections based on the size of the building. For residential, I requested that they model a range of the minimum 41 units to the maximum 122 housing units, and the results generally indicated that the high-density residential development would generate less traffic than the various commercial uses, but more than office uses if a office was located there.
Can I jump in with a question?
Absolutely.
All right, I'm trying to find the traffic information. When was that, when was that done?
The analysis was done in July.
July of this year?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Sure. And it, you know, was specifically requested from the traffic engineer, so we could just really understand how regiding it may affect the surrounding transportation system or intersections. So, just as an example, on the high end, traffic from the residential development of 122 units, the average weekday traffic would be 823 vehicles per day, and commercial, based on the different uses, ranged from 1,600 cars a day to 3,700 cars a day. And then the office was 326 cars a day, and was, was our average weekday calculations based on the uses. So, seeing that multifamily would generally generate less traffic based on traffic engineering manuals, that was kind of a hurdle that checked the box, that wasn't a big concern in the reguidance of the property. This is the table, it's hard to read here on the overhead, but this is what the table looks like, that was included in your packet materials.
In addition to this, time of development, the city does require traffic impact studies for proposed development scenarios. Certain developments that are going to trigger a certain amount of increased traffic, we require a traffic impact study, and that more accurately defines the impacts to intersections and the level of service at certain intersections, delays, human links, and things like that.
So, it would be likely if the property were regighted and somebody proposed an apartment building on this property that we, in addition, we would require a traffic impact study at the time of development. There are existing stormwater connections that have been provided to this property. They've been stubbed out off of the city street that development could connect to. There is a pond next to the New Market Bank project or location, a stormwater pond from this site would be directed into that stormwater pond, which was designed to handle this site, as well as sanitary sewer stubs existing into the property and water infrastructure. So, the property, with the exception of replating it into a lot and block, it is basically pad-ready for either commercial or residential development. In amendment, the Metropolitan Council does require that when we amend, our comp plan amendment requires notification to adjacent and affected jurisdictions, so we were required under their standards to notify the New Prague School District, New Market Township, Scott County Planning, Scott County Highway, Scott County Parks, and Vermillion Watershed District. They all did respond in writing, but they didn't have any comment or opposition, and they waived any further review of the topic. New Market Township was the exception, with the note that the supervisors were concerned at the increase in traffic on Dakota Avenue. That was prior to the release of the engineer's information, and following that, they did not have any further comment. So, staff took a look at the two requests separately, and first, in analyzing that request for the comprehensive plan amendment, the comprehensive plan is a document that has goal, identified goals and policies for future development related to land use, housing, transportation, natural resources, parks, et cetera. This comprehensive plan serves as a guide in directing the growth and development of the community. It must be consistent with regional policy plans, and it must be, any amendment must be approved by the Metropolitan Council. So, for this request, we really looked at the housing chapter of the comprehensive plan, and there are a number of goals in the comprehensive plan related to housing and providing options for housing. I'll just read some of them into the record. Housing goal number two specifically states that we want to provide housing options for people in all stages of life and all economic means. Tools to achieve those would be, provide opportunities for the potential development of a variety of dwelling unit types through sufficient amounts of appropriately zoned land, that we maintain zoning and subdivision regulations that allow for construction of a variety of housing types and price ranges, that we may utilize PUD zoning to provide for a mix of housing types, promote development of multifamily housing in areas that are well-suited and to serve high-density, guide and zone lands suitable for existing senior housing in close proximity to goods and services, and then market and encourage development on existing vacant lots. So, I took a look at the overall acreage of undeveloped land within our 2040 growth boundary, both undeveloped land in the city and outside of the city. There are a total of 3,262 net acres that are yet to be developed, subtracting out wetlands and steep slopes. Of that 3,262 acres, 66 net acres are guided to high-density residential currently, and 311 net acres are guided to commercial under the current plan. So, again, four acres, I guess the staff's opinion that four acres would probably not have a detrimental effect either way to leave it commercial or add it to our high-density residential land use guidance. The zoning ordinance specifically states criteria that should be considered when considering rezoning applications or map amendments, and first criteria is that the rezoning request is consistent with the comprehensive plan, so if you chose to amend the comprehensive plan, it would be consistent for that. And the site location is adjacent to commercial and medium-high-density residential development, so wouldn't it be completely out of character to have high-density development in this area? The proposed use will be compatible with present and future land uses in the area. We have inserted the table of surrounding land uses that really show a mix of commercial, multifamily, and low-density residential. The proposed use conforms with all performance standards contained in the zoning ordinance, so any development would need to meet the criteria, so this is... Anybody would understand they have to meet the minimum criteria of the zoning ordinance. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public utilities and will not overburden the city's service capacity. As mentioned earlier, the site does have access to utilities and can be served, and then traffic generation by the proposed use is within capabilities of streets serving the property, and I think the findings by Bolton and Mink show the site does have access to local road system, and access to the site and impacts to the surrounding system will be reviewed in conjunction with the development, and it would be expected to be less if regighted to high-density residential. The planning commission did hold a public hearing on this request on July 30th. There were comments received at the public hearing. The meeting minutes were provided for your review. I would say, generally speaking, the comments related to concerns regarding property values, school district capacity, traffic, and capacity of the parks, the city's park system. The city doesn't really have any, our staff doesn't have any information related to property values or a difference that might be to surrounding property values, commercial versus high-density residential, and we haven't researched that further. There was a letter included from the superintendent. The council may recall that in the fall, in the late fall, this issue was also brought to the council's attention during a public hearing over capacity of the school system. Immediately following that, we did reach out to the superintendent, who verified there is capacity in the school system, including, and every grade, they're accepting open enrollment with the only exception being all-day preschool.
Traffic, I think the traffic issue has been assessed after we've explained, and then councils were, every development pays into the park, system, park dedication funds or land dedication, but it does take time, build those up to do improvements on various parks. But that is regulated by state statute as well as city code, so the developer will be required to contribute most likely 8% of the value of the land in cash to the city's park dedication fund. Following the public hearing and comments received, the planning commission recommended approval of both the comprehensive plan amendment and request for rezoning on a 4-1 vote. So, the requested action from the city council tonight would be to hold discussion regarding the applications, two applications, and possible action included in your packet. It was a resolution based on planning commission recommendation, a resolution approving the amendment to the comprehensive plan and authorizing distribution to the Metropolitan Council, and ordinance approving the rezoning from PUD to R4. City council may approve the request, deny the request, or continue the discussion, but we are obligated, under our 120-day review, to take action on this by October 12.
I'm here, sorry to start firing questions.
So, the developers are present tonight, and I would also, some people from the management are part of the hearing, so...
Thanks for that. And I'll start this by reiterating, this is not a public hearing, but whenever there's a, whenever there's something that could be somewhat controversial in the IA, I always encourage and like to hear feedback from the public, if there's anyone here that cares to address the council before we start discussing this, getting the comments. No, all right, I'll get into it. Who has the first question? Otherwise, I have a couple of everyone's nervous to answer.
Not nervous, go ahead.
Okay, well, first I'll start with the traffic analysis piece. Did I hear you write where you said commercial could generate between 1,600 to 3,700?
3,780, average weekday trip.
Average weekday trip, okay. I wanted to clarify.
Average weekday, there's peak hours and peak hour and peak hour, but this is the average weekday.
3,700 seem, I kind of question that number, not that you put together the number yourself, but this seems crazy.
Sure. A strip retail center, which I would think would be more like the adjacent building, is estimated at 1,600.
Does that seem odd to everybody? Really?
It may seem odd for this location, but keep in mind, this is based on sort of a national sampling of similar uses.
Am I specific for this location?
Yep, yep.
Thanks for clarifying.
Yeah.
I just can't imagine that many cars entering a strip mall, if we have a strip mall there per day, is that...
For a strip mall, is that 1,600?
1,600, 3,780.
Okay, so this is...
All right, well...
Joe, I'll volunteer you to sit out there and count some cars for...
I will do it. As long as you can join me and can have some beers.
It'd be a great problem to have, actually.
It's true. I also wanted to ask a little bit about the zoning. So, R4 is kind of what's, what's being recommended, and I suppose that staff feels is the appropriate zoning for this, correct?
Well, it's the only...
It's the only?
It's the only option of, based on the comprehensive plan. There's one other multifamily housing district, but that, those standards are specifically directed to the core downtown. You would have a multifamily project in downtown.
So, that would be R5, correct?
It would be R5.
And is this considered too far away from downtown to be part of R5?
It is.
Okay, and what are, I mean, are you, could you briefly kind of explain the differences between R4 and R5?
R5 would be the type of multifamily housing that you might see in downtown Minneapolis, and maybe stretching a little bit, zero lot line, where you can build that building right up to the property lines. Parking would not be permitted in the front of the building, or it'd have to be the size of the back of the building. The architectural standards are higher in the downtown, there's a much greater percentage of brick or stone, and the remaining architectural standards are just higher for the remainder of the building.
Yeah.
There's more open space requirements in the R4 district than the R5, the R5 is creating density, meaning they're not looking for open space. So, that, in addition to contributing to the park dedication fund, they also have to provide open space on the home site for their own residents. In the R4 would not have to do that in the R5.
And I understand it's PUD doesn't really come into play?
You have to have a specific site plan that you're approving for a PUD, and that's usually requested by the developer when they need to deviate from certain city codes that they can't meet.
Do you know on R4, what the approximate height level is?
In R4, it is 35 feet, but they can go higher, basically by right if they increase the setbacks from the property lines.
So, they have the ability to go higher?
They have the ability to go higher if they increase the setbacks. Every 10 feet they want to go higher, they have to increase the setbacks from the property lines by 5%.
So, realistically, that 35 feet, is that a two-story building, is that three-story?
Typically, a three-story building.
Yes, okay.
And is that the same as in the commercial?
Yeah, except in the downtown.
Right, because this would be the neighborhood commercial or business or whatever?
The B1 is, would be the business district that would apply.
Okay, and that one, the structures can be up to 35 feet in that as well?
Yeah, it could be 35 feet in height for an office building as well.
Okay. And when was the last time we reviewed the R4 standards?
We actually did it very recently, when Haley was here. We did a complete rewrite of the industrial and business district standards. Did a big analysis of, you know, many adjacent communities, and so I have a couple of slides I just threw some, didn't throw the height, but just, so in R4 standards, I'll just do a couple bullet points.
Good, yeah.
So, in R4, and this was in our old code too, even before we revised it, that provision should be made for Dexter Porches when possible, and maybe you don't want Dexter Porches here anymore.
If regarded to Heighten City Residential. The Planning Commission did hold a public hearing on this request on July 30th. There were comments received at the public hearing. The meeting minutes were provided for your review. I would say, generally speaking, the comments related to concerns regarding property values, school district capacity, traffic, and capacity of the parks, the city's park system. The city doesn't really have any, or staff doesn't have any information related to property values or a difference that might be just surrounding property values, commercial versus Heighten City Residential, and we didn't research that further. There was a letter included from the superintendent. The council may recall that in the fall, in the late fall, this issue was also brought to the council's attention during a public hearing over capacity of the school system. Immediately following that, we did reach out to the superintendent, who verified there is capacity in the school system, including, and every grade, they're accepting open enrollment, with the only exception being all-day preschool.
Traffic, I think the traffic issue has been discussed after we've explained, and then councils were, every development pays into the park system, park dedication funds or land dedication, but it does take time, build those up to do improvements on various parks. But that is regulated by state statute as well as city code, so the developer will be required to contribute most likely eight percent of the value of the land in cash to the city's park dedication fund. Following the public hearing and comments received, the Planning Commission recommended approval of both the conference of plan amendment and request for rezoning on a quarter-one vote. So, the requested action from the city council tonight would be to hold discussion regarding the applications, two applications, and possible action included in your fact, it was a resolution based on Planning Commission recommendation, resolution approving the amendment to the conference of plan and authorizing distribution to the Metcalfton Council, and ordinance approving the rezoning from the top R4. City council may approve the request, deny the request, or continue the discussion, but we are obligated, under our 120-day review, to take action on this by October 12th.
I'm here, sorry to start firing questions.
So, the developers are present tonight, and I would also, some people from the management.
Thanks for ma'am. And I'll start this by reiterating, this is not a public hearing, but whenever there's something that could be somewhat controversial in the IA, I always encourage and like to hear feedback from the public, if there's anyone here that cares to address the council before we start discussing this, any comments? No, alright, I'll get in there. Who has the first question? I have a couple of everyone's nervous to answer.
Not nervous, go ahead.
Okay, well, first I'll start with the traffic analysis piece. Did I hear you write when you said, "Commercial could generate between 1,600 to 3,700?"
Thirty-seven hundred, three thousand seven hundred and eighty, average weekday trip.
Average weekday trip, okay.
So, average weekday, there's peak hours and peak hour and peak hour, but this is the average weekday.
Thirty-seven hundred seem, I kind of question that number, not that you put together the number yourself, but this seems crazy.
A strip retail center, which I would think would be more like the adjacent building, is estimated at one thousand six hundred.
Does that seem odd to everybody?
It may seem odd for this location, but keep in mind, this is based on sort of a national sampling of similar uses.
I'm not specific for this location, thanks for clarifying. I just can't imagine that many cars entering a strip mall, if we have a strip mall there per day.
For a strip mall, is that 1,600?
Sixteen hundred thirty-seven eighty.
Okay, so this is...
Joe, I'll volunteer you to sit out there and count some cars for...
I will do it. As long as you can join me and can have some beers.
Be a great prop to have, actually.
That's true. I also wanted to ask a little bit about the zoning. So, R4 is kind of what's being recommended, and our staff feels is the appropriate zoning for this, correct?
Well, it's the only...
It's the only?
It's the only option of, based on the conference of plan. There's one other multifamily housing district, but that, those standards are specifically directed to the core downtown. You would have a multifamily project in downtown.
So, that would be R5, correct?
It would be R5.
And is this considered too far away from downtown to be part of R5?
It is.
Okay, and what are, I mean, could you briefly kind of explain the differences between R4 and R5?
R5 would be the type of multifamily housing that you might see in downtown Minneapolis, and maybe stretching a little bit, zero lot line, where you can build that building right up to property lines. Parking would not be permitted in the front of the building, or it'd have to be the size of the back of the building. The architectural standards are higher in the downtown, there's a much greater percentage of brick or stone, and the remaining, architectural standards are just higher for the remainder of the building.
Yeah.
There's more open space requirements in the R4 district than the R5, the R5 is creating density, and they're really not looking for open space. So, that, in addition to contributing to the park dedication fund, they also have to provide open space on the home site for their own residents. In the R4, would not have to do that in the R5.
My understanding is P U V doesn't really come into play?
You have to have a specific site plan that you're approving for a P U V, and that's usually requested by the developer when they need to deviate from certain city codes that they can't meet.
Do you know on R4, what the approximate height level is?
In R4, it is thirty-five feet, but they can go higher, basically by right if they increase the setbacks from the property lines.
So, they have the ability to go higher?
They have the ability to go higher if they increase the setbacks. Every ten feet they want to go higher, they have to increase the setbacks from the property lines by five percent.
So, realistically, that thirty-five feet, is that a two-story building, is that a three-story?
Typically a three-story building.
And is that the same as in the commercial?
Yeah, except in the downtown.
Right, because this would be the neighborhood commercial, or business?
The B1 is, would be the business district that would apply.
Okay, and that one, structures can be up to thirty-five feet in that as well?
Yeah, it could be thirty-five feet in height for an office building as well.
Okay, and when was the last time we reviewed the R4 standards?
We actually did it very recently, when Haley was here, we did a complete rewrite of the industrial and business district standards. Did a big analysis of, you know, many adjacent communities, and so I have a couple of slides I just threw some, didn't throw the height, but just, so in R4 standards, I'll just do a couple bullet points. So, in R4, and this was in our old code too, even before we revised it, that provision should be made for Dexter porches when possible. And maybe, we don't want Dexter porches here, but it's just some, that's what the ordinance currently states. Exterior finishes, a minimum of twenty-five percent of the building facade shall be class one building materials, that's your brick or stone, and then the remainder would be up to the, so we have class one, class two, class three, class four. Class four is your vinyl siding and wood, it's the lowest level, which current, under our current ordinance, would be allowed in R4. Open space, they have to have a minimum of ten percent dedicated recreation space on the site for the own residents, and then thirty percent of that site has to be landscaped. Where R5, a minimum of fifty percent of the street facing facades have to be brick or stone, forty percent of the other side, the class four materials aren't permitted at all in the R5 in the downtown, so vinyl siding would not be permitted in the downtown. Landscaping requirements are reduced.
Kind of where I'm going with this is the, you know, I met with and spoke to some of the neighbors in that area, and some of their concerns, and I think there's some valid concerns, and just, they're going to be looking out their driveways, or looking out their windows, they just want to see something nice, so it's going to be there. I want to make sure that whatever we would allow to go on that site is aesthetically pleasing, I guess, to the neighborhood and to the residents. Twenty-five percent, you said twenty-five percent stone or brick?
Can I piggyback?
Yeah.
Where you're going? So, I'm curious, do you have a slide like that, which I could have asked earlier, I mean, for the commercial or for the business B1 district too, I mean, what the standards are, is it similar to R4 of percentage of whatever, I mean, we know it's the same height, so could it be an ugly commercial business? Or not ugly, that's not how you would say it, but not as aesthetically pleasing as an R5 business might be, for whatever an equivalent would be?
To the developers that are here, I don't want you thinking I'm trying to suggest you're going to put together a poorly designed project that isn't...
That's our mayor's question. Understood.
Okay, didn't want to give you that in front.
You're okay, we're... I can answer some questions, but if you have a question, I'll...
I do, but I don't know if now is the time, because I think we have to analyze this without a specific project in mind, so, but I am very interested, but I just don't think I can ask now. Thank you.
Do you want to answer questions?
Thank you.
So, in B1, just the primary exterior building, facade finishes for commercial shall consist of class one, two, or three materials, which is fiber cement siding and...
So, I think where Josh is, what would be most comparable to commercial use in the same location, and the classification for the exterior services in R4 would allow floors where the commercial zoning in that same location, based on its current depths, the guidance would be more similar to the R5, which isn't allowed here, but the architectural standards we have for multifamily.
Except there's no requirement for a minimum percentage of brick or stone, so like EFS, which is kind of a step mill type material, could be used on the majority of the building, and developer shows that.
Traffic, you know, leave traffic aside, because in my opinion, traffic's not super relevant to the zoning, just based on the information that it provided. But I do want to know, I guess, I don't, don't take offense to this, Rich, I don't care what traffic study or any analysis says, I mean, I sat out there for about an hour the other night, just watched cars just kind of flying by, and just the level of traffic on those streets. I do genuinely feel for the neighbors in that area, and I do, I would like, maybe at a future meeting, we can talk about different ways to mitigate the traffic, whether it's levels of traffic, or speed of traffic, or...
We actually have something to share with you tonight, maybe, whether it's part of this, or during the engineering report, but for that street.
Engineering report would be great.
Sure.
Alright, Josh, you got more questions?
Are there, can you talk about landscaping, and like, is there any sort of requirement for any like privacy, or anything of that nature on property lines?
Just that thirty percent of the site needs to be landscaped, but that could be grass.
So, there's no requirements for trees, or?
There's not a requirement.
Do other zoning, or residential zoning districts, have some to do with that, I guess?
There are, commercial and industrial districts have screen requirements to residential.
Residential, multifamily neighborhoods require, you know, a certain number of trees on property, but they're not really intended for screening, it's more for providing a certain character to the neighborhood, providing ultimately an atmosphere, but I think there's a lot of these in the kitchen stuff, but not for streaming purposes.
So, specific to the whole rezoning and all that stuff that we're talking about here, I mean, where I keep going, or what I go to, is what would make the most sense long-term for something in this property? I'm looking at the screen that has, we can see the strip mall, that we see the blank, and we see the townhomes. It seems to me, in my brain and how I could visualize the old SimCity 2000 planning, that this would be a good transition from business to high-density residential to medium-high-density residential, and the townhomes to single-family. It seems like a good transition to me, versus flocking in another commercial, anything there, whether it's a gas station, or nightclub, or all the other stuff that could be going there right now. So, I mean, it feels like a good fit for rezoning this. It gives us some of the housing options that, you know, we look for in our goals and everything as well. I think of potentially people that would be able to live there and walk to work, would be awesome, and have options like that. So, I don't know, I mean, I think, and then to even address some of the traffic stuff and whatever, to potentially mitigate some of the higher traffic-y type things that could go into that spot, this seems to help with some of that too, so. I mean, I like the idea of rezoning it, again, taking a project example of any kind, I mean, I think it just, it makes sense from that bigger, broader picture of our goals, and this specific location seems to fit okay for that.
The property that Blackstone was interested in, was that, did we rezone that to R4?
We did.
And was that originally commer, was it B2?
It was originally P U D.
Oh, it was P U D.
With underlying townhouse development there. The owners of that property have recently submitted a concept plan showing an extension of the townhouse development there. The, as you know, the admin project is off the table that you had considered last fall, and what we did, like our concept plan for consideration of townhouses. Doesn't mean it's going to go, or they could still build apartment building, but we did rezonate.
As far as the school capacity, I know that's not really our jurisdiction, but I can't find it, because then I read, I mean, there's actually a lot of, Eagle has a lot of room for potential growth.
One hundred seventeen?
Oh, it's like one hundred seventeen.
It might be worth asking for a date, since it was from October of this year.
I was surprised to, surprised to see that. Really questions? I think I can say for the concept of amendment for rezoning, I would, if we're doing work that was just done recently, the lands, the lack of landscaping in R4 is, those kind of concern me a little bit, and I wouldn't mind, maybe, the next meeting or a meeting in the very near future, that we kind of review that and pick that apart a little bit. Like I said, I just want to make sure when we're having apartment, and this isn't going to be the last apartment that we look at, this isn't going to be the last thing in R4, I just want to make sure we're having high standards for the type of project that's coming in here, so. And then we're going to look at traffic, and Rich has some fun ideas for us later.
I think they're fun.
Is there any other, anything else that you'd like the Planning Commission to review in relation to R4?
I don't even know if I, well, I suppose that's the process of having a, because I would like to see R4 more aligned with R5, from whether it's brick or stone, or whatever it might be, the landscaping, of course, as well. Those are the things that pop up.
So, you think you could just help us, because we want to go to the commission on questions for staff, and what that, and the direction would be, is it moving the standards closer to an R5, or directly comparable to an R5, or is that question still?
Fairly comparable, and I think it probably would be good to have a joint city council line, if that's possible, to have that discussion. You know, that could be kind of scheduled, and I would try and do that, but...
You sound a little smirky.
I'm just picturing Tom trying to coordinate and... But that would kind of expedite the process, I don't know, I think it'd be good, unless some members disagree.
Well, then they'll get the direct message of what your thoughts are, as opposed to a mishmash, not that you don't communicate well, Tom.
Well, I guess, my question would be, is there, what's the level of speed that we need to do this at? Is it to have done before, you know, an application comes in for a project on this property, or how quickly are you thinking? Is this like a longer-term thing to look at it, or? Well, I mean, that, that...
Not specifically to this project, because my understanding is it still has to be plotted, so there's a problem, that's going to take some time to do. So, I mean, we'd have a little bit of time, and I don't want to, I don't want to look like we're just zeroing in on the Geiger's project here, because it's really a bigger-picture approach, and making sure that we're comfortable with what's coming in. When an application's presented to us, and we kind of have to approve it, I just want to feel confident that it's a really nice project that's going on there. Bryce, you just, you gave me a look like you want to argue, so bring it.
Yeah, I don't know, I'm kind of against it, I mean, I'm against revisiting R4 and start deep diving, all that stuff. The only reason why I say that is because we did just put a significant amount of time into it, and I, my personal feeling is, is if you, there's a reason why there's R4 and R5, and why there's differences in each district, and I, I think it's going to get super expensive when you start requiring more architectural design restrictions on, it needs to be this percentage more on the buildings. Like, I get where you're going, but I think it's going to prohibit some growth in some of these areas where we want the growth.
Yeah.
At the end of the day, and so, makes me a little nervous to start going down that path of now saying, "Okay, we want it to look more like R5."
Sure. Yeah, that's a fair point. I think, I don't think it has to be, I mean, if it's one, we're giving them that discussion about it, I think it's probably a good discussion to have, and maybe at the end of the day, we don't do anything with it. Because you're right, if we do increase architectural standards, if we do increase landscape requirements, it is going to be an expense to the developer. But I just, I kind of go back to what I said earlier, I just, I want to feel confident that if we approve a project, I can look the neighbors in the face and say, "You're going to like what you see, this is going to be something good."
Yeah, I mean, I...
I don't have that level of confidence right this minute.
I don't disagree that it would be nice to look at our landscaping requirements and to say, "Well, you're not just going to put grass down, and that's considered landscaping." Like, you know, if we looked at some of those requirements and said, "We would love to have some trees," and things like that, like, I agree, but when you start getting from twenty-five percent, no more than twenty, you're twenty-five percent of your class four, or whatever it is, to now we got to, we're increasing it to fifty percent, I mean, that's a significant amount of money that we're talking on, so, that'd be my only concern.
Well, I guess, keep perseverating on it, but, you know, what's currently there for a commercial could be a very bland, same height, more traffic, and we'd have to rubber-stamp it and improve it, based on our current standards anyway, so, I mean, I think by moving in this direction, we're already enhancing some of the pieces of what could go there, while maybe not perfect yet. I still think it's a step in that direction, so.
Do they want to pose, just have a, like, a conversation about it with the Planning Commission? So, it's really all in that, the key point, so. Alright, I'll shut up. Kate wants to talk, I know you've been just chomping at the bit.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm okay.
Any other discussion?
I'll chime in real quick and say, with the concept of amendment, two-thirds hope is needed, two-thirds is four out of five, and the zoning amendment is a common judgment.
So, if we're ready to take action, is there an action? Unless Tom, did you have something?
No, after you act on the applications, if you could, Mayor, just summarize what you feel the direction wants to staff, then following that action, that would be great.
Motion to approve resolution, approve resolution 22-53, amending the 2040 Act Plan and approving distribution of amendments to Met Council. Can we, do we do them together or separate? Oh, do separate because of the different voting, yeah.
Second.
Alright, that was a motion by Josh, I think I heard Amanda first, the second by Amanda. Before we vote, any last comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Passes. And so we need another motion?
Motion. Go ahead.
Go ahead. Motion to adapt ordinance 7254, rezoning property from P U D to R4.
Motion, Kate?
Second.
Second by Amanda. Any last minute comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, so, we pass, and the direction would be to, the staff to make the, give the old college try, to try and schedule a joint meeting with the Planning Commission to review...
Regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday.
I'm sorry?
I said they have a regularly scheduled meeting on Tuesday. This coming Tuesday?
You would not be overly close.
Is it too late, right?
It's too late.
Okay, yeah, true.
So, we either need to wait, we need to have some sort of joint meeting prior to the work session, and then council meeting, they have to wait till the end of September to go to Planning Commission, or we can schedule something entirely separate.
You already have something set up for the work session for September?
We may be able to use that, it depends on how much discussion we have related to revise draft of the budget. As we've discussed, if it's relatively straightforward, with a couple of tweaks, we'll just do another administrative update, and get any direction we need there, and that would free up the work session for this type of a discussion, and we can try and push towards that. Right now, I think that's very likely.
Okay. Okay.
This, at this point, this is a recommendation forward, or similar to what we did in that council, for people, so it is coming there. So, we will, we will, and then that.
Thanks for, I heard by you guys over a couple meetings, and the planning, and we listened, and we have some potential modifications to our plan as well, too.
Look forward to it, thank you. Okay, under reports.
I don't have anything specific for the council, unless there's any questions on any of the updates I sent out last week, or...
Would this be an appropriate time for me to comment?
Would this be an appropriate time for me to comment on the THC work group or shall we wait till discussion since that was in your update? No, I was just going to say, so, sent the, the first group of documents from the THC policy and working group from the league. They, we had a meeting this afternoon and they revised that, so I just forwarded on earlier, before the meeting started, the draft. Policy with working revisions. If you, if anybody has feedback, chief or anybody else has feedback, they're looking to get the language somewhat finalized. This is just the policy for the league that then they're going to be able to provide examples. We had representation from cities all over, we had somebody representing the police chiefs association, Hentor, Hentor, something. Yep. It was a good conversation and I, I think the league has done a good job because it was during one of the policy committees, you know, it was. We finally get local control and then we complain about it. So don't push back too hard and allow us to maintain some of it. So they, they did strike a really good balance of here's where the state needs to provide some broader guidance and support. Also funding for some of the testing that might need to be done for enforcement purposes and training for licensees. And they talked a whole bunch, about a bunch of different things. If there's specific feedback, send it on and then we'll make sure that they get it.
Cory, can I think of public works?
Yeah, nothing.
It's good to see you, Cory.
Nice to see you too.
Hollywood.
Ah, nothing unless you have a question.
Engineering.
So we have an informational item for you tonight, as promised, but a memo in your packet. I'll burn through this as speedily as I can. I'm going to ask Cory to weigh in, since he has firsthand experience with some of the issues we talk about. So this pertains to the drainage ditches alongside the roadway up in Woodcrest, if anyone's not familiar. I think you probably all are by now, but it's basically gravel road with ditches. This was built back in the late seventies. We've got sixty-six feet of right of way with what's supposed to be a thirty foot wide gravel road with a ditch or a slope on each side. You can notice the shape of these ditches, well, people like me care about it, but we don't like V ditches because you can't build them. You can't keep them that way because you can't mow them. There's very little flow capacity and it's, you know, only two feet deep below the roadway surface. The surfacing was six inches of class five base with a high point in the middle of the road that's supposed to drain to the sides each way. That was the plan. How it went, quality control is somewhat suspect. I'll show you some maybe later images, I think that, well, this one even shows it. This is a nineteen eighty aerial photo. This roadway is supposed to be in the middle of the right of way, clearly not. The V ditches pose challenges. I've mentioned erosion, limited capacity, they're hard to build, they're hard to mow. The plans for the project provided no culvert sizes or materials for builders of homes that are connecting driveways to that road. What that means is they could put in whatever they wanted, whatever size, whatever material, or nothing. So they were designed, installed by builders, one home at a time. Current conditions, over the years, gravel's been added and grading done to smooth the roadway. A lot of that gravel is now in the V ditches. We've got missing, damaged, undersized, plugged, overgrown culverts, as you can see in the photo. And ditches that are now filling with gravel and sediment. And I actually heard today that there's some belief that at least some property owners have actually filled in the ditches because they wanted yard out to the road. Cory, you probably can add to, to what you've seen and whether that's actually true, if you've seen that or.
No, the, the main issue is, we can't grade it. There's nowhere for the water to go. So typically, you grade the edge of the road, but if there's no ditches, it's got nowhere to go. So rungs on the edge of the road, you have big rungs at the edge of the road and there's, my biggest issue is for fifteen years now. We're asked to fix things, we can't. Unless you go through and do everything, you know, you put a culvert here, but you don't have one here, so the water's got nowhere to go. We're not seeing a ton of complaints, but we can't, I mean, when we go out there and grade the road, we just make it somewhat flat and that's it. We're not, we're not shedding the water off the road because there's nowhere to go. So, there, there's a problem, but we definitely can't fix it without doing some sort of project.
So what Cory was just talking about means that the runoff's at the edge of the roadway, which leads to soft edges in the road, rutting in the spring or wet weather. We have had resident complaints, I think you guys are staying ahead of it, or they've just decided that it doesn't pay anymore. So, yeah, it's hard to get the water off the roadway, which is exactly where you don't want it. Rehabilitation needs would be to replace the culverts to the proper location. I'm reading this to you, but it's important, so I'm going to read it anyway. Location, elevation, size, and durable material. Then you go in and remove the sediment between those driveways because now you've established a grade line by putting those culvert pipes in. Regrade the ditch to create the capacity and create something that can be mowed and maintained rather than a narrow V ditch. Restored, and restore the disturbed area. So the water can get off the road, flow to where it's supposed to, and have a ditch that's maintained and still looks nice. Schedule is flexible, but this will not get better on its own. There are challenges. I mentioned earlier the location of the right roadway and the right of way. You can't hardly go restore a ditch on private property if the road's at the, already at the edge of the right of way. Line and grade control for the culverts. You need something to go by, that means there's, needs to be some survey and some design work done. Existing utilities, phone company, gas lines, electric lines, maybe too shallow for this and have to be relocated. We just don't know at this point, but it's highly likely that if any have come in recent years, they might not be deep enough to allow us to put a ditch back. Possible, and I'm underlining with my cursor, possible future water main, there's no plan for water main, we're not promoting that, but it could come up. Water main disturbance, so it's something we want to at least think about. And then finally, how do you pay for it? Anything else to add, Cory?
Um, well, I guess the, the difficult part is, our job, we're a job, we solve problems. This has been a problem for a long time, it's very frustrating because I can't solve it without doing something. And it's always been, it's, it's a large project to fix it. We can continue doing what we're doing and, you know, it's just when a resident complains about something and you can't fix it, it's.
And there are, every time I've campaigned and walked through that development, I have several people present to me, so it's, the complaints are there.
This, this issue.
Just water.
Yep.
Scandal.
Yep.
Where it's running and all that stuff.
So with the funding piece, is there any recourse for people intentionally screwing it up? That may could justify assessing for this? I mean, I think if people. I understand, I, yeah.
And we've, we've asked professionals who are involved in the process of, you know, when you're assessing that to show proof of benefit. And we've talked to some individuals, in fact, the firm that's doing the work through the Valentine area, they've indicated that this project, in these types of circumstances. It's really difficult to show the benefit relative to the cost of actually doing the project. And while we could explore it further, I think from a conceptual standpoint, I think we have to assume that this data won't have percent of the funding.
Would that be the case if we, if there was a need, a desire, enough complaints? Maybe they know not to complain because then things have to get fixed. That if we were to replace the road, that then along with doing the road, it would have to get fixed and.
Like the curving other.
I don't know though.
You would recommend curving an urban section?
Yeah, I would keep it an urban section or rural section.
And in doing that, it would require us to fix it and do it right? Would then we be, have any leverage or ability to assess for?
Well, you'd certainly have a lot more meat and a, and a lot more benefit to show. I mean, they're getting a paved roadway, which I think most people would like. I also think most people don't want to pay for that.
No, no, right.
So, that would, that would do it, but might even be more difficult than figuring this out. I also did check with legal counsel as to whether we could make an argument that these are privately owned culverts. In the city's right of way as a condition of their permit to connect their driveway to our road. And thus, your deficient culvert needs to be replaced because you're no longer compliant with that permit.
That was a good show.
I thought it was, I thought it was very nifty.
I, I think the only way a project is going to be found is through the city council. We've all dealt with projects up there, I mean, that's.
Is, and ball, again, ballpark hypothetical, not hoping anybody's feet to the fire or anything like that. I don't even, I can't even begin to imagine what something like this would cost to fix. Quarter million dollars, million dollars, a hundred thousand, I mean, any general.
First number?
Quarter million? I mean.
That seems a little high to me, but it could be north of a hundy, yeah.
I'm pleasantly surprised by that. You think it's more?
I think, I think it's.
We've done no work, I'm just taking forty dollars times three grand.
I'm taking it hard and I'm saying it's probably a hundred fifty dollars. Just by the time you get anybody else to do anything. That's just a guess.
Joe, when you walk in, grab a shovel and bring a shovel with you and start digging up the culverts.
And drag a bunch of fifteen inch pipes out there too.
Put the gravel back on the road.
I will do some road work on it. All right, thanks for that, Chris.
That's all we have, something nice for you to think about for the next one.
Do you have something to call out on traffic control?
I do.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
I got to figure out how to find it.
You said, what about Tom Theory?
Oh, my lord, how can you navigate that?
All right, you are looking at, from Eagle's point of view, Dakota Avenue, James Parkway on the left. Two fiftieth or two sixtieth, basically Connor Road Two on the right. And we have added on this drawing pavement markings. And there's two reasons for those. One is to do what we can, which isn't much, to respond to complaints about queuing at peak hours. And we think it's associated maybe with school drop offs, that tends to be a very intense traffic period for ten or fifteen minutes and then it kind of dissipates. But it's people that are waiting to turn left onto two, when there's not a lot of perhaps gaps, so traffic can stack up. Sorry?
Roundabouts?
So we did not attempt.
Sweetly enjoyed you, that was good.
This is the county's problem to solve, the left turns, we can't do much about that on our end. But what we can do, and this is born on, you know, I, I live where there's a lot of streets wide enough for people to pull over if they're making a left so people can get around them. But they don't, and so it backs other people up. So, we thought, well, there is room here to mark in a left turn lane and a center line lane, hopefully for the queuing. People that want to turn left, pay attention and stay where they ought to so that they're out of the way for people that might want to turn right. Even though there may only be a few cars that want to do that, it would provide some relief for that. And then the rest of the markings, as long as we're going to mark the channelization for the turns, let's go ahead and mark edge lanes and center line on the rest of it. And let's keep those lanes narrow rather than twelve or thirteen feet, is would be typical, we're marking eleven foot lanes. It does tend to have a calming effect on traffic. I.
Like the striping?
Like the striping we did on other streets. Now, this is a wider, straighter street, it's hard to predict what the effect will be, but.
On hand to you though, I doubted you on the boulder point and stuff. I wouldn't, when it's just a striping, I just thought, oh, it's kind of ridiculous.
People don't like to cross those lines.
It even feels better walking, I mean.
You drive slow, I, I drive slower.
You do, right?
You feel lighter. An old.
Complete joke.
But you're right, you drive slow.
You feel channeled in there and you feel like you have to stay here where Glenboro before it's such a wide road. That you could be here, here, and Aaron is kind of the same way. And I, I feel that it's letting people down.
So this is a low cost way to try to calm the traffic a little bit.
When can you get it done?
This has been turned over to Cory's department and he's in contact with the contractor. We have an open contract for pavement markings through our JPA contract with Burnsville that's still valid. And we're hoping to get them in there yet this, this summer.
So, we need to add a turn lane to turn.
Add a left turn lane, it'll leave room for a right turn. We typically only mark with an arrow the dominant movement. And you'll see that if you look at Zerkes or, or other ones, the primary movement is marked and the other one is left clear. So that's what we're doing here. And then edge lane and a double yellow down the center.
I like it.
I like it.
Yeah.
All right.
That's all I have.
Thanks, Rich. Uh, can we develop?
Um, yeah, thanks for your question.
Parks, and, and after parks, I have a question for Tom, I was asking, is there a park status? I had someone, this is the bench, Pete, Pete said.
Yes.
If there's some damage to. Who, who's responsible, is that, is that Public Works that goes up there?
Yeah. So if we're ready to manage with probably a little setup or vertical inspected, addressing that, that is down.
There has been some, they're calling them blocks.
They weigh like six hundred pounds.
Yeah, there was two by two.
I think there was like a memorial sign or something, the person, the, the family was kind of upset that it had been trashed and.
Haven't heard anything about it.
Can this count as hearing something about it? Thanks Cory, I appreciate it.
I don't have a meeting to hear about something like this.
What's that?
I do have email.
I was just asking Tom, you just happened to.
Anytime I ever watch you shoot me an email, usually I have my hand on the pulse of a lot of things that go on. If we don't know about it, we can't fix it, but, I mean, if, even if somebody would call, we might even have another plaque. Because I think there's two of them made when, when they did that journey.
Right, all right, appreciate it.
And the officers are through their void that, for other issues, golf carts on there, construction vehicles on there, so.
There is a lot of extra patrols in the park up there as well.
You guys do best to.
We try.
All right, C, C, C.
We met last week, minutes are in the packet. The big thing is that this Saturday is the community picnic, so we'll be there. Ten o'clock for a setup, picnic is from eleven to two.
Who's all going to be there? I'll be there.
I will be there.
Anyone else?
It's ten o'clock.
John, are you going to make it? Okay. Other reports, scale. You know, maybe the best way, way of giving a scale update is maybe just sending out some of the links to the information that was actually presented. The primary topic at the last scale meeting was focused on the THC stuff. I'll give credit to the county attorney, I think he did a fairly good job of really presenting what some of the issues are with the legislation. Should be no surprise, the county is going to do a moratorium on it. There are a number of holes in what was actually passed and, you know, we'll see what comes of it. If anyone's interested on the county's. and, you know, we'll see what comes with it, but, uh, if anyone's interested on the county's, on the scale website, through the county's website, there's all the documents, uh, from the presentation are included, so. Anything for, uh, service delivery?
Yep, so on the THC item, uh, the last scale meeting, uh, they basically set up a working group on this, um, topic, the intent, um, is to have the relevant city staff members, whether it's administration, law enforcement, planning and zoning, um, work, um, under a steering committee, that will look at, uh, best practices for responding to the topic, um, as it might evolve going forward, I think the first meeting is just in a week or two here, um, the other item that we have started to work on, uh, coming up here is the, um, ultimate replacement of the law enforcement information system, you may have heard us reference LETG, as council's aware, is, uh, the solution that the county had, um, purchased, um, several years ago, uh, the problem is that then they got bought by another larger company, and that company is no longer investing into the continued devol- evolution of that piece of software, and, um, that only is not police, but it's also fire, jails, I mean, it's, it's a, it's used throughout the, the county, and, uh, it is, has some limitations, um, as a piece of, as a piece of software, as you have heard your staff gripe about on occasion, so, uh, the county right now is planning it like a twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six replacement timeline, and it's a massive undertaking, and so, discussions are being held now about setting up a steering committee that would kind of oversee and deal with it, when the, uh, LETG was implemented, um, the implementation left something to be desired, it was kinda left up to the, um, law enforcement, um, officials and the IT people to make it happen, no offense to Brady, but law enforcement and IT are some of the two most territorial, uh, departments that you have within local government.
Wasn't this just put in place like twenty fifteen, or twenty sixteen?
Sixteen, here in Scott County, we had it a little earlier in.
Yep.
And the county spent a significant amount of money on this program.
Yep. And, and not long after, it was, they got bought out, and it basically got put on a maintenance-only program, so, uh, this time we wanna make sure we don't have the implementation issues that we got the first time, and that product that we're getting really meets everybody's needs as best as it can, so, um, a little bit more time and investment down the forefront than it was last time, so we're starting to work out that.
I thirty-five.
Uh, we do not wait until next month.
Uh, discussion by council?
I sent Tom an email while he was on vacation, but I wanted to bring this up to council, um, I had a resident that talked to me about treating Emerald Ashport, um, I guess there are some other cities in the metro that do it, and they charge the residents based on a certain amount, so I guess I just wanted to throw it out there and see if it's a problem, or if it's a widespread problem in the city, where maybe that's something that you could offer, or we could do, I don't, I have no idea, I don't know much about it, so.
So it hasn't been a widespread problem in the community, we did have one that was just identified this year, um, that tree actually is far enough along, and it probably needs to be taken down, and we've spoken with the homeowner, one on, one on that, our past practice, when the question has come up, or somebody is concerned, or they wanna protect against it, we simply direct them to private sector for companies that do that type of, um, treatment work, um, so, my concern is that if we did it as a city, there's additional time and resources, and ideally, we would capture that as well, my fear is we'd basically become the general contractor, we're gonna take certain percent on top to cover our time, and right now, we, or we have felt that it's most efficient to just, when we get the question, direct them to the private sector contractors that do that work, and then they can find out, A, who they want to use, and it's probably would end up being more cost-effective for the resident, I think some of the cities that you're referring to, they have, like, whole neighborhoods that have boulevard trees, of ash trees, and we just, it's not, although we do have them in the community, the issue at this point hasn't been as prevalent.
Turn up.
Any other discussion? Promotions?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion, Kate?
Second.
Second by Bryce, on favor?
Aye.
Next adjourned, thank you, everybody.